I'll call this town of Vinyl Haven Board of Selectmen's meeting to order for Wednesday, November first, 2023. Uh, roll call, Tom Anthony, Don Young, Leslie Dyer, myself, Deputy Town Clerk Elizabeth Bunker and Town Manager Marjorie Stratton. Lad Olson is absent. Number two, approve agenda is amended. So.
Second.
All in favor? Number four, approved and signed treasures warrant, number eighteen.
Just have the minutes.
Oh, well, we don't need them. I did, I jumped right on. Approve the minutes from October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
So moved.
So, all in favor? This is why we do that. Number four, approved and signed treasures warrant, number eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Number five, communications. Nope, we don't have anybody. Number six, speakers from the floor. Seeing none. Go on to number seven, committee and departmental reports and appointments, seven A, Woodard and Kern.
I didn't get a, um, you know how we get those status reports? I didn't get one this week.
Okay.
Um, I don't think so. Gabe could give an update on this on Friday.
Yeah.
Could you also give them an update on the kickoff meeting for the LED streetlight?
Oh, good.
Sure, I would be happy to. Um, yeah, so, um, downtown project updates, um, other than what was submitted in my report, um, just to, just to update on the things that have been outstanding, um, good news. Thanks to Amy Turner and some help from, uh, Rhiannon Hampson, who's the state director for USDA. We're able to move forward. Um, we haven't, we don't have the USDA consent in hand, but we had assurances that it was, uh, being sent to us ASAP. So our hope is that we'll have that, uh, to the attorney by next week. Uh, and we can get that recorded, which means then we submit the site documents and design to EDA. Um, and then we proceed from there, which means they need thirty days to review or up to thirty days to review. It's possible they'll expedite it for the holidays or it's possible they'll drag it on, uh, for the holidays. But we'll see how it goes. Um, we're basing it, um, our, our going out to bid on thirty days, their thirty days. So once we, once thirty days pass and we have their approval to move forward, we can put the project out to bid. So we haven't finalized what those dates are yet until, until we actually get, um, the documents, um, the, the, uh, consent recorded with the attorney and have all of the documentation ready to send to EDA. Then we'll, we'll confirm what those dates are with you all. It's like I said at, at the last update, it's not really the best timing, but it's better than not moving forward at all. So, um, we just, we're doing the best we can. So, um, the, you know, we're still like, you know, this with getting, getting someone to bid on it and putting the project, um, you know, having it be ready for, uh, the spring to do the, the water project. So, uh, that's good news. The other bit of news is that, uh, the, um, environmental assessment, which I've mentioned several times, which is the holdup on the second pot of funding through Northern Borders Regional Commission, um, which is the portion of the project that's funding the boat launches, um, the down, the, the downtown and the fish plant parking lot improvements, including the wharf's repiling and also, um, the relocation of the water district offices. So that, that's that pot of money. And we've been waiting on some, uh, information from NOAA to, uh, we've submitted information to NOAA, uh, to review because the project for the boat launches obviously goes into the water. So the environmental review is that much more stringent. Um, we did receive information back from NOAA. Um, it wasn't negative. It was just they need more information and that's information that the engineers need to get from Prok since Prok will likely be doing the construction. So, um, yeah, so that's where that is. We just sent that off, um, to the engineers. They'll get the information from Prok. We'll get it right back to the, uh, to Northern Borders. They'll get it to NOAA. Hopefully NOAA will say, great, um, let's move forward. But timing on that, we just still don't know. Um, I was hoping we would get the sign off, you know, before the end of the year. It's, we'll see what happens even after they, um, even after they say, okay, you guys are good to go with the environmental assessment. There's a thirty day public notice period and once that passes, um, then we get the notice to proceed, which means we have their full permission to move forward with incurring expenses for the project, which means we can officially start designing that phase two of the project. So, good news, the wheels of bureaucracy turn slowly as we know, um, but all good things. Um, I think those were the two major updates of, of progress. Um, does anyone have any questions on those or anything else, uh, around the report that I submitted or just questions in general about the downtown project?
I don't think so.
Okay. Um, and then as far as the LED, um, light, uh, streetlight conversion project, we did have a kickoff meeting with Affinity LED, um, with Amy from Fox Island Electric and, uh, with Rick, uh, from North Haven, Rick Latimer from North Haven and also, uh, um, oh, sorry, I'm drawing a blank on Claire's last name, but, um, Claire is their new island fellow. So is working alongside Rick and will be handling a lot of the project management of that project on the North Haven side of things. So, um, yeah, we had a, a great kickoff meeting, um, Marjorie, uh, and Rick and, uh, uh, yeah, I guess Amy too. We just like talked about sort of the, a little bit of the logistics and the timing. Um, likely it will be January before, um, Amy and, um, Affinity LED sort of plan to have Affinity LED folks come out to do, um, the on the ground audit of all the streetlights on Vinyl Haven and all the streetlights on North Haven. And then they come back to the towns with some recommendations, um, and basically just saying like, here's what we see. And if we were gonna suggest a street lighting plan, um, this is what we would suggest. And then, so what we do at that point is the towns, um, need to have some level of community conversation, um, engagement and, and particularly with like the select board, public works and, um, emergency management in particular, um, just around location, current location of streetlights. You know, are there areas that are overlit? Are there areas that are underlit? Are there changes that the town would like to make? Maybe people, you know, the, you know, talking about public comment, um, you know, cause some people might say, I don't want a streetlight right out in front of my house. But emergency management might say, well, that's necessary for reasons X, Y, Z. So anyway, we'll have those conversations and, um, I'll be working, um, as much as I can to support Marjorie on that. And Claire, um, and Rick on North Haven are gonna be, you know, spearheading a lot of, um, that engagement piece on North Haven. So we'll, should be able to have some of that trickle over, um, as we figure out what Vinyl Haven wants to do. But that's the timing anyway. So spring, next year, there should be a lighting plan to review, do some community engagement, and then the actual conversion would take place next fall, like after Labor Day is when the install would take place. So all good news moving forward. And if folks have any questions about that, yeah, always happy to answer as best I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gabe. Okay, that's good news. Um, seven C sewer commissioners, commissioners appointment. We would like to appoint Al Conant to the commission. Uh, make a motion that we point him, Al Conant.
Second.
All in favor? Let's spit it out after a minute. Um, seven D ferry service advisory update.
This is Peter asked us to, um, add the, add it to the agenda. Phil couldn't make the meeting and Peter, uh, was there offered to give the board an update.
There was a special meeting on Monday. The commissioner spoke to the advisory board about the proposed rate increases for, and I don't, I can't remember the timing, but there, there are rate increases coming. They're talking about a budget deficit of, I guess, eighteen percent over the next four years. And then, um, then they, the, the department, the ferry service and the advisory board have had some conversations, which I wasn't part of, cause I'm not on the advisory board. I just was at the meeting and was a little alarmed at the way the commissioner was speaking about future funding, if nothing else. They seem to, the department seems to have landed on strongly in favor of a rate increase that significantly impacts trucks. I think the thirty, thirty-five percent rate increase for trucks in the wintertime and forty-seven percent increase in the summertime. I, my, the, the documents I sent that were the two proposals, I sent that email this morning.
Oh boy, I'm sorry. Was it an attachment? Maybe I just skipped it or not skipped it, but overlooked that.
Attachment that was. Yeah, it, it might be worth looking at, that, so that you know what I'm, well.
Do you want me to go make copies?
Have, like, just so that they can see it after. I mean, they don't have to be looking at it right now, but, but they, yeah, I think it would be useful to just have it to see because there's a bunch of different information put into it about two, two different proposals for rate increases. One of them is much more even across the board for, um, in order to generate their income. And, but the, the proposal that the department seems to be standing on has a significant, uh, increase for specifically for trucks. And it wasn't entirely clear to me why that's what they favor. The commissioner talked about a lot of different things and sort of shifted around, um, and, and he seemed to be suggesting somehow that charging a lot more for trucks would encourage people not to bring their cars. That kind of thing. Um, and the other, there's some, the other thing that the commissioner talked about, I mean, I feel a little bit like Chicken Little. I'm, I'm sort of running around and the sky is falling, but the other thing the commissioner talked about and touched on several times was, municipal contribution to operations of the ferry service. You know, trying to get the towns to, anticipating that the towns would be adding some, some contribution that is.
Is that something like you had? Phil had, Phil had said this previously.
Um, yeah, but that's only a form of.
Okay.
I can forward your email to the selectmen or get copies to them. I'm sorry.
I'll go to.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll run the copy here.
Um, the commissioner was making reference to getting a contribution from the municipalities that are served by the ferry service. And he seemed to be taking the position that because the mill rate is low, then there must be, uh, income or revenues available in the sound to help pay the ferry. And he said that it wasn't just once. He said he came back to it a couple of different times and I'm, does he actually not know that there's no connection between, I mean, the connection between the mill? You can't compare mill rates across communities. It doesn't make any sense. Uh, he, he referenced Casco Bay Lines. Um, he, he made reference to the fact that Casco Bay Lines doesn't transport nearly as many vehicles as we do, but, you know, and they use electric vehicles and have golf carts, as though he thought the entire community of Vinyl Haven is within golf carts as the boatwork.
One trap at a time?
I, well, yeah, there's that, you know? I, I don't know, but it was.
Yeah, those islands are under different motor, there are motor vehicle rules.
Casco Bay Lines is a private entity as well. And, and they all go into Portland. I mean, some of the islands are part of the city of Portland. So the city of Portland, which is a fairly large municipality. Well, it's in the states, so. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, they're, they can support, you know, if they're part of the ferry service or whatever that's, whatever their arrangement is. Um, but I was really disconcerted, um, at the, this commissioner's attitude towards providing ferry services. And, and also there was, it, or in the past, I've heard this again, that it's a vital threat that you don't really wanna bring this up too loudly because somebody up in the county can, that's, and he, and he mentioned that. You know, it's, I don't know where they're going with this. Um, and you, so many know, I mean, I've had my go around with the Department of Transportation and the Ferry Service. Um, but yes, it seems to me something that to be trying to be well aware of that the Department of Transportation is, is, I mean, between the, this proposal and then the, the putting in the proposal for the winter schedule that isn't consistent with what the community wanted. I mean, what we've had before, just arbitrarily making decisions, making a proposal and putting it in the factory later without really having anybody had a chance to, to comment on it. As they're going forward, there's gonna, I'm afraid there's gonna be more and more of that stuff happening. We're gonna end up, if we're not trying to get ahead of the conversation, we're gonna end up in a situation where, you know, either the rates go out the roof or the, you know, somehow they've made decisions that really have a negative impact on our ability to stay here. Um, and I don't know whether, my, my thinking goes to the legislature. I know very well, Department of Transportation does not like it when people talk to the legislature about what they're doing. I think the transportation committee should, could be a venue to have a conversation trying to figure out what the commissioner's talking about, whether he's actually, you know, appropriately sort of targeting, getting the communities to put some of the bill. Now, that's what the legislature thinks they should be doing. If it's something the department's trying to do, you know, on their own. He also continued to, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm running out, but he also, conversation was very, seemed to be very clear that in that context, the, the communities were the only people that were getting any advantage by the ferry service. That there was not, you know, yes, the, the violent community, the year round island community, that somehow the fact that there was, you know, state money going into service, the ferry service was really not the thing. As though the ferry service only was helping the people who live here, not the people in the rest of the state that come and go or anything else. It, it, it was a very uncreepy attitude that I heard from him. And I just, I can say, I feel like Chicken Little, but it seems like trying to figure out where they're going with it.
Well, uh, historically, you know, I used to, I used to attend all of the ferry advisory board meetings. And historically, we were always nervous about going to the legislature to complain about much of anything because we didn't wanna, um, disrupt, I don't know if that's the right word. We didn't wanna mess with the fifty-fifty allocation that we have right now. In other words, the, the state or, uh, the highway fund, you know, main state ferry service pays for fifty percent of the cost. Plus, we have to think about the fact that they pay for all the capital expenses too. And we felt like if we made a lot of waves, then the legislature will say, well, who is this again? And why do we care about these islands? And why are we paying all this money for the ferry service? So we're, we're always quite hesitant and nervous about bringing it up. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't. I'm just saying it's something to think about and who do we approach and on what level?
My only reference on that, and it's long enough ago that probably none of the legislators involved are, are, are wrapped. But in twenty sixteen, uh, the local state senator sponsored a, a resolve, which is pretty much, if I understand it right, pretty much the legislature asking the department nicely to do something for them. Um, so there's no reason to object to it. He sponsored the resolve. The department didn't like it. They got the governor to veto it. And the senate at least voted a hundred percent to override the veto. So on that issue, at that time, there was full support for the ferry service and for the conversation that they were having. And, you know, like I say, I don't know whether that persists. It's very hard to tell at any, in any legislature, whether they're gonna, you're gonna have enough people that support the idea of the ferry service. And if Marjorie says, you know, you, you do wanna find out, but seven, eight years ago, whenever that was, there was certainly plenty of support for, you know, this conversation they were having. That included, there was very, the ferry service was right there in front of the entire legislature and they were supporting what was, what was being asked, you know?
Well, also, also years ago, when I, I was co-chairing the main, um, Islands Coalition, I was much more involved with the legislature at that time. Um, you know, as a, for instance, we got money into one of the transportation bonds to, um, fund island airports. Um, but where am I going with this? Um, I mean, we could go that route. Uh, there are people at the Island Institute that are familiar with current legislation and proposed legislation and might know, you know, who is approachable and who isn't. That might be a route to take. Or just, I mean, we could, you know, talk to Hannah Pingree, you know, and say, Hannah, you know.
What's going on?
She works for the governor, you know? Um, I just, I, I haven't been involved in that side of things for so long that I'm really not in tune with it. But I did today, uh, send an email to William Geary, who is the new director of the main state ferry service, asking him to let me know and there's gonna be a ferry advisory board meeting. And, uh, contacted Alan Barker is our alternate to the ferry service advisory board. And I contacted him and he said he wasn't getting notices either and that he would step up and, uh, go to more meetings, um, especially if he contacts Phil and Phil isn't able to go. You know, we need to have somebody there. And, you know, if I know nobody's gonna be there, I can go. You know, just so somebody's there to represent Vinyl Haven and to say, hey, what's going on? Um, anyway, and I appreciate you coming in and telling us what's going on. Thank you.
How often do they meet?
Every other month.
Okay.
There's a, there's another meeting on the thirtieth of November. Um, but it's every other month and it's the third, Thursday, fourth, and I.
Is the commissioner, is the commissioner the same one that came out here a few years ago?
I don't think so. How when did Van Noe go in, do you know?
Four years ago.
Okay.
He, he, they, he, Bernhardt was there until, um, Mills was elected and Van Noe.
Right.
And Noe came back. He had been commissioned before, I think, but. Just, I just, like I say, was a little alarmed at the way there was, what I was hearing.
As well, you probably should be. We all should be. Well, I think that's important for, for us to know. And Matt, like Marjorie said, she would go to the meetings to represent us if nobody else can be there or should go anyway, maybe. Hmm. Is any, is anybody, um, able to go to the meeting? I mean, is it open?
Yeah, the public here.
Oh, yeah.
I've been, I've been going since March because I, the, I have enough questions that I know from inside that there are things that could be done better, in my opinion. They could be done differently. That might be more efficient, more effective for the customer service. Um, and I just wanted to see how the department was handling the advisory board and how that, how that happened. And I haven't been all that impressed yet. Um, but it, there, there's so many things that I think could be improved relatively quickly if the department chose to, um, that they don't do. And that's some of the stuff that's been conversation that I'm aware of for twenty-five years. I think, yeah, you know, like trying to figure out a lineup, policy, law. It's as simple as that. They could do something. They haven't tried anything. They haven't changed anything since nineteen sixty, as I can tell.
Well, it's unfortunate that they don't have people that know the island, islands, you know, work for the department, you know, work for the ferry service that can help solve some of the problems. I mean, it feels like they put people on, uh, you know, head up these things that have no clue. Like, they don't even know, never even been on a ferry. And I don't, I don't understand that.
It's hard to, it's hard to understand.
Yeah. Are you allowed to speak at those meetings? You can?
It's a public hearing.
Yeah, I just didn't know how.
No, I, um, the board chair is John Emerson from North Haven. And in general, they've been very willing to let me contribute if, if I had something to say. And I'm pretty sure that if some, anybody was there, I mean, I suppose theoretically, theoretically, you have to have permission from the, be recognized by the board to, to contribute. But I mean, it's probably not any different than the rules are here, so it's, yeah.
All right. So what, is there anything, any discussion we should have or is? Marjorie, you have any?
Stay tuned.
Oh, stay tuned. Okay. We understand that.
Um, no, I think we just need to make a better effort. And, um, as I said, I contacted, uh, Alan Barker. He's the alternate. And, um, just to make sure that, for instance, if Phil isn't able to go, that we have somebody that can attend the meetings. And then if I, for instance, know neither one of them are gonna be there, then I could go. Um, I think, um, you know, I can start some conversations with different people. I mean, they don't have any concrete proposals, right? Or what is?
The only, the only proposal is this conversation about the rating, the fair increase. But there were no other concrete proposals, except it really felt like the commissioner was sort of laying the groundwork for proposals going forward of, of, you know, funding changes.
Well, they've always talked like that, really, but, um.
And I, if I had heard that before and sort of gotten used to it, that probably wouldn't have troubled me so much. But it, it just seemed like, you know, keeping and keeping aware of what they think they're gonna try to do. Um, might not be a bad idea.
But it's also true that they have to have a public hearing for the rate increase.
Right. I mean, that, that whole process.
To keep your eyes and ears open for any kind of meeting, a public meeting.
There was an article about the rate increases in the local news. I didn't read it though. It was yesterday, I think. Uh, Knoxville Soup.
I, I, I get the local newspaper. Would it be in that, the Courier?
Probably would be in the Courier when it comes out.
I get that on Friday.
I think it's Knoxville Soup, but I'm not positive.
Yeah. Yes, I should say.
And trying to keep an eye on when the meetings are or when the public hearing's gonna be, when members of the board aren't even getting notifications of when the meetings are. Uh, you know, it's, it's a little, um.
Oh, like Alan, you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there was something said about how the, um, towns need to let Mr. Geary know who is the duly appointed representative.
The, he seemed to read the bylaws for the advisory board, which probably is not a bad thing. Um, apparently the bylaws suggest or point out that the advisory board members are supposed to be appointed for two-year terms by the community. Then, then the ferry service, the department should be notified who they are. And at the end of the meeting, he said, yeah, you know, probably sort of make sure that all of you are duly acknowledged, cause they didn't have any track record, which isn't surprising considering a previous manager who didn't do anything.
Yeah, it was always done in the past. It was pretty strict.
Right. Well, since they haven't been doing it and so.
Yeah, he did everything. He did do a lot that he could do to damage.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll agree with that.
Well, as long as we have some notification, I mean, I think it would be, I would like to see Marjorie go to the meeting, start attending the meetings.
Where are they?
They're right at the ferry terminal.
Wait, they're also been having Zoom access, so.
Oh, really?
You don't actually have to go to.
So you could zoom in, Marjorie, if you.
You don't have to go there.
So John Emerson is chairman. So John Emerson is chairman of the committee?
Yeah.
He's the chairman of the. I mean, I wouldn't, I mean, if you ask him, I bet, I bet he would be quite willing to make sure everybody was notified of what he knows.
Yeah, the, the advisory board has to be notified of any, what's going on, so. So I would, I would, um, like Marjorie to, if you can zoom in, Marjorie, that'd be great. Then you don't have to leave.
I know. I mean, you might want to, but.
Yeah. It would be convenient to be able to zoom in.
But it's obvious that this, that the potential would be in a political situation with the North versus the Islands. And we really ought to be thinking about strengthening our political connections to the legislature, whether it's the Senate or the thing. And I'm not quite sure how we do that, but I think we better start putting our act together so that we see who our allies are, who they are. Yeah, cuz it is, it's gonna come down to politics for us all sudden then.
Well, our, our connection always used to be, uh, with the Maine Islands Coalition and with, um, the Island Institute kept, uh, closed tabs on any legislation that, uh, could have, could affect the islands, uh, either positively or negatively. And, um, I don't, I don't know what's happening, what has happened in the last several years in terms of keeping up with, because what happens with the Maine Island Coalition meetings is that the legislative, the legislators that represent the islands come to those meetings and talk directly to, um, directly to us about what's going on, um, which is, um, was always beneficial. And as I said, I haven't been involved for several years. I went to the last meeting because Roger Burley was stepping down his chair and I was co-chair with him for several years. But I think since COVID, I think they're just really getting up and going again. And they've got two new co-chairs and so, um, but there, there are always people at the Island Institute that keep tabs on legislation. And it's worth the, it's worth the conversation. And it's great that I, um, the new president of the Island Institute, Kim Hamilton, is from Chabig. And as you know, I lived on Chabig for five and a half years, so it's another person that I could just have a conversation with and see, uh, if she had any thoughts about who I could talk to there.
Yeah.
To, you know, just to have the conversations and, um, stay, stay in touch, I guess, is the name of the game.
Yeah, sounds like a good idea to me. Gabe says Alex Saparo.
Alex.
Um, I hope I'm pronouncing it right. Is the transportation liaison for the Island Institute and is actively working on island transportation issues. She will share there his content.
And they've been, they've been at their side of the Island Institute, been at the advisory board meetings, they've been intended.
Thank you, Gabe. Anything else for discussion on this? We know we have to be aware and stay tuned. All right, we'll move on to seven E, uh, Knox County Sheriff's report. Thank you, Peter.
I was also told, uh, by, oh, I think I might get it wrong. If they have a candidate that hasn't completed the application process and.
I spoke with Cook, uh, a couple of days ago. And evidently they're moving forward and, uh, right now they're doing the background checks.
Right.
It looks like North Haven is gonna lose its constable or sheriff.
I don't know.
In Facebook, I think, uh, Josh had already indicated on Facebook that he is, uh, gonna be going to the mainland.
Social media. Try not to.
We come to Rockland, there's a sign saying that anyone that wants to join the Rockland Police Department gets a ten thousand dollar bonus or some, apparently they're pointing to people who are from the sheriff's department.
They lost six.
That was a couple of months.
Yeah, but they've lost six of them. Not that they've lost any more since, but they.
Yeah.
Unless Josh is one of them that's gonna lose.
I don't know. I don't really like to say things that I don't really know for sure.
And even then.
Nothing ever for sure to happen, right?
Okay, uh, number eight, old business. There's nothing under old business. Um, nine, new business. A, solid waste disposal and transportation agreements.
Uh, these are the agreements that I gave you at the last meeting.
Correct.
So there's two, one with Thomaston Recycling that will do, be doing our transportation for the, um, solid waste and demolition as well as the recycling. Did you have any questions about either?
Um, I'm all set. Anybody have any questions on those?
No, we discussed them last meeting, didn't we? What's that, Les? We discussed them last meeting, right?
Well, Dawn wanted to.
Yeah, I think, I don't think there's much to be said. It's, it's what it is.
Well, that's kind of what I thought, yes.
I'm looking at it. I don't see any options.
No.
Yeah.
And I mean, we had a chance to look it over previously in our previous, um, board packet. So I guess just, um, what we need is a motion to accept the solid waste disposal and transportation agreements.
So it would be, uh, the agreements between the town of Final Haven and. Is it, where, yeah. One agreement is with waste management and one is with Thomaston Recycling for the transport.
So they have to be made separately?
No, I mean, you can make them together if you want, but just state that there are two agreements.
Right.
Thomaston Recycling and one where it was management.
So make a motion that we accept the, um, solid waste disposal with.
Okay, Thomaston Recycling.
Yes, Thomaston Recycling and.
Waste man.
Waste management, sorry.
And those are just gonna be signed by you, Mr..
All in favor? Thanks, Tom. And this one with two. Thank you. Uh, nine B, set date for special town meeting for the land use ordinance amendments and addressing ordinance.
Well, we're thinking of, um, getting everything signed at the next meeting, which we thought would be the fourteenth. And then having the meeting on the twenty-eighth, the special town meeting, rather. But I should be, we're just throwing out those dates from the town clerk perspective.
So what, anybody have a choice?
It sounds fine to me. I might not make the fourteenth meeting, but.
That would just be a signed warrant announcing the meeting. So that the special town meeting wouldn't be until the next, the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Can we get a current copy of both proposals for the ordinance?
Oh, sure. Um, okay. You wanna electronically or?
Either way.
We have the, um, addressing ordinance.
Yeah, well, that's something that we just discovered had never really been finalized. It's kind of been hanging out there in Never Never Land and we wanted to just complete it while we had the opportunity.
Good idea. And I thought we had a copy of the, uh, the, it's, it's online, right? The land use.
Yeah, I thought I emailed it, but.
Yeah, I think you did.
I made myself a note right now.
Email it out again? Okay. I know you did, because I was looking, because I was looking it up.
Um, I met, me and Marjorie, well, for a brief minute, we met with Matt on Monday and went through, I think, all of the changes. So we have a final red line.
Very good.
Okay, good, yeah. Oh, good. So that would be good to get the updated one. Okay, great. Okay.
Do you need a motion to set those dates or?
Um, not really. I mean, um, if you're okay with the twenty-eighth, then what? We will prepare, we need, kind of needed the dates in order to prepare the documents. So we'll get all the documents prepared, uh, there's a warrant, uh, of course, it'll be probably just three or four articles. But then you also need to sign a document that certifies this, uh, the amendments to the land use ordinance. Uh, goes from the selectman to the town clerk. Then the town clerk has a permanent record of what is being proposed for amendments. And that's filed, uh, in the, uh, uh, permanent record of her town clerk record. So we know exactly what happened and exactly what was proposed.
Okay.
So will there be board meetings those two nights as well? Okay.
Yeah, the fourteen and the twenty eighth would have been regular.
All right.
I'm sorry, I'm interrupting.
No, you're fine.
No, you're fine.
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, we, we've had two public hearings and, you know, there's dozen people come, unite.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's been brought up publicly enough that anyone who's concerned has forwarded and asked questions.
Any other? I'm sorry, I'm running this meeting.
Who does she think she is?
I need to go get your gavel, I guess.
Uh, I don't, I mean, we're not really all that formal, which is probably a good thing sometimes. Um, anyway, I, we all sat on this discussion here?
Yes, I am.
All right. So we're set in stone almost for the.
Draft warrant for November twenty-eight.
Yeah, don't go changing it on me now. I just put it in my phone, so.
Oh, God. God, they're jumping ahead so fast. Report, uh, ten, uh, item ten, report of town manager.
Um, I did give you a budget meeting or budget meeting. Budget report. This is just the first quarter. Uh, and everything, everything looks fine to me. There are some line items, uh, that are problematic, but the bottom line in each department is fine. Certainly, if you see anything that you'd like to point out or things that you have questions about, I'm happy to answer those questions. Um, it should be around twenty-five percent. And most departments are lower than that.
Well, as usual, the only one that draws any attention is transfer station. That's a way we can.
Oh, you mean the travel and transportation? Well, that was, um, we had the, um, backhoe repaired, which we had budgeted for. It wasn't unanticipated. It was an anticipated expenses that we had in our budget. But, uh, what I failed to do and what, you know, is think about the fact that it costs a lot to transport the backhoe to Caterpillar where it was repaired. So a lot of that, uh, transportation cost is that expense. And I, the, uh, travel and transportation line, usually it's just an average of the last five years. But, you know, having to transport that backhoe up there was a bit unusual. That's why that lot, that particular line is way over.
Just can you imagine the truck weight goes up a little bit?
Any other questions on this? As I said at the, uh, oh, maybe it was just a fan earlier. At the next meeting, um, because the ferry advisory board members', uh, term expires in December, uh, I'm gonna put that on the next agenda just to make sure that we re-up the two representatives and send that information, um, to the new director over there. It's a different, um, the bylaws are, um, from January to December, instead of our fiscal year is July to June. So it's a little bit out of the ordinary, but anyway. And just an, another, oh, wow. I was gonna remind you about a Zoom, Zoom webinar on eleven twenty-eight, elected officials workshop. But I guess you can't go to that anyway, cuz you've got. It's like at two, I think. It doesn't say. I think it was earlier. It's like from two to. Well, if you're interested in doing something like that, you could touch base with us and check in and.
So what's the webinar again?
Elected officials workshop.
Is that the?
The main municipal.
Right.
I took that one. Don't you have to take it within like a hundred and twenty days of coming us?
No, that's the freedom of access you have to do.
Okay.
As far as I know, I don't think this is mandatory, but it's a good, it's a good overview. Um, any other question for me?
The freedom of access, when, when is that offered for our newer?
So it's offered for, uh, you know, throughout the year really, but that, I think that one you can do.
You can just do it online.
Sign off that you've read it.
You can do, it's like a thing online. You just watch all the PowerPoint.
Yeah.
Things.
Pretty straightforward.
So have you done it?
Yeah.
Mine was. You did it too?
Was it?
Yeah.
What's up?
I'm pretty sure you did.
How are we doing on the road? Catch up with all the, all the issues we had from the prior range of, are we getting caught up?
Yeah, I think so. I'm, um, getting fewer complaints. There was just one complaint that came in today just about Summer Street that I don't know if we missed it or whether there seems to be a problem with the culvert, but there aren't many people on the street, so. I think we're, we're there. I mean, we still have to redo the culvert at Polly Pond on the North Haven Road. But what they, the fix they did seems to be functioning. I went over it today. But yeah, I think they've done a good job of. Uh, Millie wanted to be here, but she had a, um, uh, yeah, a student, yeah, sports banquet for her daughter. Those are important.
Yes.
If I'm here for that very reason, should I wait to speak? For, Millie told me to come here for, to discuss my road.
Oh, I have no idea.
So I'm not sure when to discuss, or if this is appropriate.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I, yes, I had, I'm sorry, I don't know who you are and didn't.
My name is Rebecca Chambers, I live at two six three North Haven Road. My road is, um, well, what used to be the big sign that was the Boondoggle Project? That, um, what floods. Um, my road used to be the old racing track.
Oh, you're up behind there?
Yeah.
Okay.
So my house is up above, but my road comes off North Haven Road, and it's a shared road, and then my, I have my road going up into the hill, my hill. Um, and the last two years, I wasn't exactly where what, what was happening, we have obviously an issue, which Millie has expressed to me, she came and looked at my place, that the um culvert that was put in down by the church, there's something happening to potentially change that, but that obviously is flooding my road, but why, why I'm here is actually not that issue, it's um when we get uh the amount of rain that we're getting, there is a culvert on the opposite side of the North Haven Road, just opposite my road, and it feeds underneath North Haven Road, and then it comes out onto my property. So all of the water from the town, when the town is getting flooded, is coming down the back, from what I understand what they told me, and I see it happening, coming down that culvert alongside North Haven Road, underneath the road, and then pooling over my road, and it washed my entire road out. So it's, they did this last year, not as bad as this year, overnight, my entire road was washed over into the marsh, and it's that it's too much water, so that becomes a giant pool on the opposite side of where that culvert is, because the culvert that the town put in for my road to handle that is not big enough. And Millie said, I see what's happening, so I just spent fifteen hundred dollars putting my road back together, I had just spent twelve hundred the year before, not knowing exactly what was happening, um, that she sees the problem, um, and to come and speak with you that she will replace the culvert. But what's happening is, she hasn't even had time, and then we have another rain, and what I've just put on my road has already started to wash off. So I brought photos, she's come and looked at it, she knows that it's a problem, there's basically the town's water is just washing over my road, I'm washing it out. It's not what's coming from high tide, it's from the town. Gino did my road and said, I think you need to talk to the town.
I, I personally would prefer to wait for Millie to be here to discuss, so we know.
But what is, does Millie have a proposal?
Uh, that's probably above my head, I know that she came, looked at my place and said, we're overwhelmed, obviously other things, I took care of mine, it's just I keep putting that road back together, and it's the town's water that's washing it away. Um, and since I just, like I said, put it together, we had another bad rain, and you could just see my road, where it's coming from. Um, and what she proposed is putting in a culvert at the minimum, and then coming to talk to you about the road itself, and what's happening there.
But I don't understand what the Board of Selectmen are.
I'm not sure she.
Okay.
It makes sense that we wait for Millie, talk to Millie, see what she has, otherwise we have no idea what we're talking about.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the culvert that she's talking.
It needs to be fixed, I'm sure, the less, Millie's the one we need.
Absolutely, Millie told me to come here.
No, that's fine, and we'll, I'm glad you did, but I do, I think we'll, we should wait for Millie to come to the next meeting, and then we can.
What's the name, I'm sorry, what's the name of your road?
It's a no-name road.
Oh, okay.
I'm at two six three North Haven Road.
Yeah, okay, and then Millie can talk to us and give us more details.
Well, I know that the, the subject of um public drainage and private property is a complicated one. You know, it when a you know, when there's a public road and a public culvert, and the premise is that uh it either was or wasn't installed properly, and it's causing, you know, theoretically causing some damage on a private road, it becomes very complicated, because of course the, the town is unable to spend uh public money on private property, so that's where um towns get into trouble trying to address these issues, because of course we can try to address it from the public point of view by um maintaining our ditch lines and maintaining our culvert, culverts. But it becomes complicated, as I said, when you're talking about uh crossing that line and making repairs onto private property. And I don't know specifically, I mean, I can uh touch base with Millie so, to make sure that we understand what's going on and, and bring that back to you, but um, yeah, it's complex.
That, that would be good.
On your plan.
Yeah, yes, I think that's what we can do, she can be here for the next meeting, probably on the fourteenth.
November fourteenth.
Is our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you for your point.
Thank you. Hopefully. Um. I was, I was hooting us.
Hopefully no more five inch shoes.
Yeah, exactly. I know, I mean, clearly it's like when I brought those three windshield, it's an act of God, so I don't know if they would consider, if that's an act of God to have the all the water, I, I don't know how, but I do know that, I agree with what Marjorie saying about, of course, we can't fix private property, so, I mean.
And I, I think it is a hard line, because it is public water being shoved onto private property, so at what point do I?
We need to take a look, then.
Right, and maybe Millie will have some insight that will.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, I'll come back.
Yeah.
Oh, that's good. Okay, thank you.
Do our, can you stop? Go left to the top of our message. Dave says we can add the culvert to the island-wide culvert conversation when we meet with Millie and the next site visit with Brent.
Yeah. Good. Anything else, Marjorie? I don't have anything, okay, um, eleven, report of members. Anybody have anything?
Um, did you see the email from Phil?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
I didn't quite understand, I didn't, you must have sent him an email.
Actually, it is social media's fault, um.
Everything is plain.
Rumor has it that the policy of having a reservation, usually you get there fifteen minutes before, or in, on the Rockland side, you get there fifteen minutes before they're going to change it, you have to be there thirty minutes before, so, um. Still.
Change it? Which side, I'm sorry, I wasn't.
The ferry, the ferry service, the, whatever, the powers that be are going to change the policy from fifteen minutes for reservations and on the, getting in line for the Rockland side, being in your vehicle on the Rockland side, to thirty minutes.
I thought it was.
Fifteen for reservations.
Could I interrupt for just one second?
Yes.
Dan, we can't hear you, so I'm gonna have to um, we'll have to wait and see what's going on, sorry, go ahead, Leslie.
Um, so Phil was tagged in this post, and he said he would look into it, so he sent a reply that he had received. It basically stated that, um because of the fact that they don't know ahead of time what kind of vehicle is gonna be in the reservation line, if it's gonna be too long, if it's a truck, what have you. And the fact that some people who are in the standby line that aren't from here don't understand why people just pull down into this other line and get preferential treatment.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm not focusing, is this on the Vilehaven side?
It's.
Are we talking about?
It's for both. My point is if there isn't clarification, put it where the schedule is posted. Reservations need to be in line fifteen minutes ahead of time, so that clarifies for people who aren't here, don't know the system, why someone might be pulling down in line later than others.
Doesn't it say that on your ticket?
I think it does.
It used to.
Do people read the tickets? And the other, the other thing was, if it's going, if you go down and get a reservation, why doesn't the terminal person say wh- what's your vehicle, and then if it's a truck, they can put it in a notation in the computer.
Well, when Debbie does her priorities, she has to tell them it's a thirty-seven foot dump truck, or a thirty-seven dually, or.
Because then, their point was, they have to go around and recount and measure and readjust, and that takes extra time. So Phil did, Phil did send us all the reply, so I, it was kind of last minute, but I just wanted to bring.
Part of that same rate increase proposal, all those changes?
I, I, no, this is a separate issue.
Oh.
So anyway, I'm just making people aware, Phil did send an email, so.
It's, it's out there.
It's out there, you can look at it, read it, I'm just making people aware, that I think there's an easier way than making everyone jump through hoops to be there thirty minutes, I think it's a simple solution. But simple solutions never seem to work with the ferry, so that's my rant for today, I'm done.
An alternate simple solution would be, everything that's not a car in the reservation has to be there thirty minutes early, cars fifteen minutes.
But the thing is, they know, when you get, when you get the reservation, you have to let them know what you're driving. So they know. So they know that already.
Right.
This, this is not information, this is a mystery.
Right. Okay, rant done.
But it's something that's changed, to change just down here. And I, I mean, is it just?
No, it's going to be reservations on both sides and the Rockland side lineup. You would, you would have to be in your vehicle thirty minutes prior to the boat leaving on the Rockland side. And, and like I said, this all came from social media, it could be a complete fabrication, but I'm just throwing it out there.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Oh, there you are. Um. You all set, Tom? Dan, I don't know. I don't know if we can hear you, I don't know if you wanna.
The question pertains to the announcement from Penobscot Island Air today that Terry Waters has sold the operation. Was the town provided the opportunity to review the new owner, their safety and operations record, any assurances about the service provide?
I didn't get any notice.
It was on Facebook. Sorry, just saying, Terry posted a, put a post on Facebook saying she's sold the business.
That may be a good sign.
I mean, I don't think we have to say, do we?
No.
It's not our.
Didn't know anything about it, so we'll look into it.
Not surprised.
Thank you, Dan. Dan, do you know who the?
Yeah, exactly.
Do you know who the nerds?
Sounds like.
Do you know who the new owners, owner is, you have no idea, you can shake yes or, your head, yes or no?
Nothing but a, about the Facebook.
Um.
All right.
Brian would go.
You guys are really on the Facebook here.
After nineteen years.
Have to do?
No, after nineteen years, we've decided to pass the torch to new, new ownership effective today. Um, by the end of the year, PIA will be moving into a state-of-the-art hangar. We found one committed, committed to servicing the islands year-round for years to come. Um, Ken, the bookkeeper, and I are committed to a smooth transition and will not leave our post for a few months until a suitable replacement is found. We will ensure the mail and freight arrive on time and customers have a quick and easy transportation option to the islands. If you'd like to learn more, we invite you to a Zoom call at one PM on Friday, November third, and the link is on Facebook, on Pembay Air's page.
They invited us to work, a weekly.
A public meeting for anyone who wants to hear more about it.
On Friday.
Friday at one PM, and the link to the Zoom is on Pembay Air's Facebook page. Their wall, their wall, Marjorie.
Uh, this is Daniel coming in via phone, did it work?
It did, we can hear you now.
Now the meeting is over.
I, I saw that, uh, and, hey, I'm sorry, I, I missed this during public comments. I just wanted to bring it to the island's attention, I'd only seen it under Facebook, obviously Terry is a great friend of all of ours, but as I think we're aware, their invention of Katahdin Air this year, a lot of their service began to go to better revenue special trips to Lake Country upstate. And I'm aware from our own EMS people that we had a couple occasions, we couldn't get a response on the island, because the aircraft were involved elsewhere. So I think this is an opportunity for the selectmen to think about our exclusive relationship with Penobscot Island Air, you got a new owner, let's make them compete for it. Let's make sure we're gonna get the level of service, and frankly, at a price that is deemed affordable. Or as much as we all loved Kevin, has the time come to end our government-imposed monopoly that says they're the only one? Maybe we offer a, put out an RFP and see if any other players want to come to the table. I doubt it, but is there a chance? That was the point I wanted to make, I thank you, Pam.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Um, Marjorie, I'm sure you'll be in contact with. I'm sure you'll be looking into this, so we'll wait to get an update from you.
I'll read the Facebook page.
It's also official. Okay, does anybody else have anything they want to discuss?
Motion to adjourn. Aren't you glad I looked at Facebook before I came to the meeting?
Not really, but. All right, um, yes, number twelve.
Yes, I just made a motion.
All in favor of your?
Hi, thanks.
I want to go get.
A boat to go there.
Oh, Lord.
Okay, so we got.